I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. We have one application for tonight, which is seven central, so I'll start with this. I will say that we have only four members here, so it needs to be unanimous vote. We will have a discussion first, so if it appears that it's not going to be unanimous, you'll have the opportunity to continue when there will be five people here. Okay, sorry, it's so confusing.
No pressure whatsoever.
I move to open the public hearing for the application of AGEM seven central LLC for special permits under section 7.2 and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a small addition to a nonconforming structure and a change of use in a nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot at seven central, assessors map number 53, lot number 32 in district G filed with the town clerk on January 16th, 2025. Do I have a second to open the meeting?
Second.
Georgia's second. Vote.
Yes.
Rob, Georgia, Diane?
Yes.
And Sarah votes yes. Okay. I apologize, Mr. Flamia, that you've had to go before so many different boards on this application. I think you've hit every single one there is in town. And the reason you have to, I know you got permission from the planning board to build the three units. The reason you have to come before us is because it's a nonconforming structure. Okay? Otherwise, and it's a conforming use, but because it's in a nonconforming structure, you still have to come before. Okay? And I did get confirmation from the planning board that they had approved it. Okay. Mr. Harden, do you want to present the application?
Sure, would you mind if I shared?
No, that's fine.
Yes, I can.
Okay, did everyone see that screen?
Yes.
Online, okay. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. It's a pleasure. As the chairwoman said, we have just been in front of the planning board and did the same presentation, actually very little similar in any case. And I'm also joined here tonight by my client, Ed. And hopefully you guys will enjoy this little presentation tonight. We actually have something kind of special, which we also shared, which is the planning board. So if you'll entertain us for just five or 10 minutes, we'd like to give you a little tour through town. And the purpose for doing this is partly to show some of the context for this project, but it's also to try and show some of the work that Ed has done here in town and to give you a sense of, I think, why he enjoys doing this. And Ed, of course, can speak at some point and explain as well, but what we're trying to show here is really a love for some of the history of town. And every project Ed has done has involved a historic building, purchasing it, for example, to School Street. This is a picture from long ago, you can tell by the cars and a few other things. This is the same building that's on the corner of Central and School. You might recognize it because of that sort of half-circle piece that is in the middle between the two gables, which is still there today, very distinguished on the corner. But when this building was purchased, it looked something like this. And it's okay, but every old building, no matter what happens in its life, needs to be refreshed and to be preserved so that it can last another 100 years, let's say. And so something that my client really enjoys doing is bringing these buildings back to their historic state, let's say, but also to a state in which it can't have a chance of lasting another 100 years. Like I said, if you don't do this, these buildings eventually will fall apart. So my client has enjoyed doing this, not just at Two School Street, but you'll recognize a few other buildings. This one, 11 Central, directly across the street, basically from where we are now and how it looked back in the day. I love all the Fourth of July decorations on it, even the chairs up on the balcony or the roof there for people to watch. Really gives a sense of the spirit of the town back in the day. And okay, looking a little sad, a few years ago, but you can see how it looks today, which takes a lot of attention and investment, of course, and time to make it look this way. Something that's worth mentioning about a couple of these, both Two School Street as well as 11 Central, this is to the left of seven central, which we're talking about tonight, and the other one was to the right of it. So on both sides of the building are properties that have been purchased by the client and fixed up in a very nice fashion, but they're also great examples of mixed use in town. These are retail on the first floor and then small residential apartments on the second floor. And in many ways, this is really what we want in town. These are sort of perfect examples of in the core of town, mixed-use living, retail on the first floor, which we don't want to lose, right? But also places for people to live up on the second floor. It's dense, but it's small. If you all recall the 3A discussions that we've had within this last year, that was really the goal in town, was to try and encourage small infill development of something like three or four units without disturbing the fabric of our town and of our neighborhood. And if you go just up the street that way, a little bit towards the center of town, you'll see the corner there of 38 Union. That's a building on the right. The building on the left is unfortunately no longer there. That is, I think, basically where Cargo Unlimited is now. Love the horse in the street, and that was a pretty good snowfall, even for the day. And this is how it was when it was purchased a few years ago. And again, how it looks today. And you could definitely imagine this building's going to be here for another 100 years. And a little bit further down the street, the other direction, 29 Central, across the street to the left a little bit, this is what it looked like when it was purchased. And after some investment and fixing it up, it looks really great today. This actually has one of the best little porches and front stoops, not just for watching the Fourth of July parade, but as you walk by, this is really a very handsome building now on Central Street. Then, of course, there's Nine Ashland. This you may not know quite as well, because it isn't on Central Street, it's actually down Ashland, around the corner a bit, but it is a really fine example of something of carpenter Gothic. So it's very rare, actually, there are only a couple of these on the North Shore. And you can see all the detail that was involved. It's all wood, it's actually sort of made to look like it was stone, but it's actually all wood. And lucky for Nine Ashland, Ed came along and purchased it when it looked like this. And it had been in the same family for a long time, but as happens sometimes, as, you know, properties pass on to children and children and children and so on, it had been a little bit unloved for a bit and was in need of repair. And as Ed has done on most of these buildings, this one really had to be rebuilt from the inside out. A lot of the structure wasn't in good shape, and it had to be fixed so that it could last again a long time, but also be structurally sound. And of course, we went, not in front of you all, because there's no change of use here, but we did go in front of the Historic Commission and spent a long time with them, talking about mostly the windows, because the windows are really fantastic on this building, and they were remade to preserve the look that you see today. Definitely worth a walk by if you haven't walked down Nine Ashland in the world, it's a really great property. And then, of course, School Street, on the corner of School and Central, one school and also the building just behind it, is a project that is currently underway. Work is being started and almost completed on the back part and about to begin on the front part. This was a pharmacy, by the way, on the first floor there. More than one pharmacies in town at the time, but that definitely was a pharmacy. And so good news, which Ed, if you don't mind if I share, Ed's intention here is actually to return retail to the first floor in that building. So that's really exciting. We haven't had retail on that corner in a long time, so we will probably have to come and revisit you, I think, for that, because it is a change of use. But it's, again, in the spirit of trying to return some of these properties to their historic nature, not just what they look like, but also how they function in the town. And this is a really important corner. So it was a little worse for wear. Believe it or not, there were 13 units in this building. This is probably the densest residential building in town. What I love about that is you'd never know, right? So a lot of those conversations during that 3A process about density and people being scared, there was a little dense building here with 13 units that no one even knew had 13 units, because it was designed really, well, not designed, it just sort of happened to be done this way. But as you can see on this back portion, it has been totally renovated, new windows, new siding, a fantastic new paint job, new roofing, and the units inside have all been renovated as well. And that will happen on the front side as well. Here's the sort of back alley area with one of the units. And that brings us to the property that we're talking about tonight, seven central. So you all probably know this building because of the restaurant, right?
The bar.
And the bar. It was a very well-known bar. This is a very early photograph. It looks a little different, mostly because the street has actually gotten higher over time, so the building looks a little shorter today, but you can still see that there's a little bit of a bow in the roof that's a little bit more pronounced today, but that's one of the reasons why we're pretty sure that this is seven central. And the windows, of course, on the first floor were changed, most likely when it became a restaurant and changed use back in the day. They wanted it to be a little bit more transparent and open to the inside, so some of those windows are different. So there you see the larger windows on the first floor, and you all will recognize, on the right-hand side there was the bar. The restaurant portion and seating area was to the left as you went in, and then extended all the way to the back. I'm sure you all had been in there at some point. Now, when exactly the barnacle was added to the right side, I don't really know historically. It certainly wasn't historic. Probably the 1960s or something like that, that happened. I don't know if you have any memory, Sarah, of when that happened. And it was not structurally in good shape. It has been removed in hopes of when this becomes a future cafe, which is the plan for it, but that area outside to the right, which is now cobblestones, can be a nice outdoor seating area for that use. So in terms of the project, as you know, there is a change of use, which is to take the back portion of the property and change it into two residential units and then have a third residential unit, actually, let me just go backwards here, on the second floor above the cafe. So it'll be a change of use from only a restaurant to a cafe or a personal space on the first floor and residential units both above on the second floor and in the rear at the back. So as I mentioned before, not unlike the buildings to the left and right, where there's retail on the first floor and then residential use up above. This is a site plan showing the lower level of the building. We have Central Street to the bottom of the page and then the pond to the rear of the page or rear of the building. For three units, we are required to have five parking spaces. There are three existing parking spaces beneath an existing deck that is back there, which we're showing, one, two, three parking spaces. We imagine that those three spaces will be allocated to the three units. There are that two additional parking spaces that we're showing to the right there that would be piggyback, and we imagine that these would be used probably for staff who would work in the cafe. It's worth noting, while five are required and five are being shown, we could also piggyback behind each of those three parking spaces and could easily have a total of eight here if needed. That might be good if guests are coming to stay, the people who live here or something like that. Now, of course, question comes up about parking for the restaurant. The restaurant never had parking. And the good news is, the change in use, well, it's not really change in use, but the change in type of establishment, going from a restaurant to a cafe, will have a less of a use for people parking with cars, we think. I imagine it's much more of a pedestrian-type of thing, kind of like Laughing Gull, which is much that way downtown. It also lacks parking like this. And then, of course, across the street and right behind us is a really good-sized parking lot that is public and that can be used for this use as well. And as I like to do, just briefly, I'll get on my soapbox here. I live in town just up on School Street, and in all the years that I've lived here, which is not as long as most, but whenever I've driven downtown to do anything, I have yet to not find a parking spot, usually directly in front of the thing that I'm going to, like Cal's. So I don't perceive that there is a parking issue in town. In fact, I kind of like it the way it is. I'll step back off my soapbox. And just to walk you through some of the plans, here we're showing in the lower left the current plan for the cafe. So this would be very much like any cafe that you would walk into. There'd be some seating, some high-top seating as well as low-top seating. There'd be a bar of sorts where things would be sold. I believe coffee is a priority of interest here, a really good place to find a good cup of coffee, maybe some pastries, maybe a sandwich for lunch. And then there's the kitchen space, which would be smaller than it is now, but located in the right corner of that plan. And then a single bathroom as well. This is a small enough space that only one bathroom would be required. And then directly above that space, so there is an existing floor there, which it looks like was at some time used as an apartment. It hasn't been for years, but maybe some staff that lived there at some point. Not only that, there actually is also a loft space or a second story in what's called a gambrel roof. So we're showing on the lower right corner there, it's basically a two-bedroom apartment in which this primary level has a living space, kitchen, and a single bedroom with an on-screen bathroom. And then upstairs from that would be a second bedroom with a bathroom as well. So a decent little apartment for that use. So then, behind the cafe on the first floor, but still on that level, there would be the first floor of two units. There'd be a unit to the left, in which it would have a living, dining, and kitchen space on that floor, and then stairs that would go up to a second floor in that unit, which would have two bedrooms. And same thing on the right-hand unit, a little bit bigger because of the kitchen that bumps out there on the right, but it also would have living, dining, kitchen on the first floor, and then stairs up to the second floor, with again, two bedrooms up there on that one. The ones in back would have great views out towards the office. Now, part of our special permit tonight is because we are proposing adding just a little bit of space. So where is that happening? So the second floor, right in this area here, the current existing space does not have any real built space in this area, it's just roof. It exists here in a small gable, and the rest of the space, it was sort of an old function room on the second floor there, but this little corner was never built out. So in terms of places where you could add a bit of room, and obviously we need to create that second bedroom, that corner is perfect. It's perfect because it exists on the other side, so we're going to mimic the roof shape and the massing of it so that it'll look like it's always been there. It's also in the center of the property, right? Because you've got the big roof in the back here, you've got the gable and the restaurant portion and the front unit here. So this area in the middle here, as we'll see in these next elevations, is actually quite hidden from view. So unless you're really walking down that space between the apartments, it's actually very hard to see. So we believe very strongly that it would not be detrimental to the neighborhood to add this small area there. So the top image is the front, something that's kind of curious about all these historic buildings. You have to choose a period of time that you're going to reference historically. I think my client's instinct is to show sort of the original state, the old, old state of it, but the Historic Commission felt very strongly that they wanted to keep the windows as they remembered it, I think.
Interesting.
Yeah, as the restaurant, which is why we're showing it in that way. And then on the back side, there are a couple of things on the back side. For example, right here on the right-hand side, there's a big picture window with an arch above it that's really not appropriate for a residential unit. So we're going to clean this up, simplify it, take that away, just add windows to the bedrooms upstairs. But we are proposing to add a very small porch roof with some columns, and those will be the entries to be used. So that roof will just make it a little bit more welcoming, give you some cover when you're trying to find your keys to get in the house. And then you can see the parking down beneath. So that's an existing deck that the parking is shown beneath.
So what you're showing us is different than what we can see?
It is a little bit, yes.
Because you went to Historic Commission prior to this meeting.
Correct. And also, it's been an awfully long time since we submitted this package.
No, understandable, okay.
Okay, so we'll need the updated version.
Yes, I sent them to you by email.
Oh, to the ZBA?
To the chairperson email.
Got it, yep.
Yeah.
I'll get them. I don't check that email every day.
Something that is curious about the building, which we sort of knew, but that back deck is a concrete plank. Little unusual, but the reason why they probably did that was they only had to be eight inches thick, so it's a very efficient structure, and the head height is quite tight down at the bottom. So in order to park cars beneath there, they used that. That was interesting. Then we found out that actually the entire back addition to the building, which was done years ago, it's all concrete plank, again, because I think the basement was quite tight, so they maximized that ceiling height by keeping the structure very tight. So this building isn't going anywhere. It's built like a tank. In fact, even the basement, it's got concrete foundation walls on those three sides, concrete plank on top. I bet this might be the driest place in the entire town. Even though it floods, it's probably like a bathtub. Anyways, so we are working with all of those things that we're discovering in the building. So these are the side elevations. If you're standing sort of on the School Street side of the building, this is where that bar addition was, but this is that piece that's up on the second floor that wasn't on the other side. You see, it's just a very simple gable up on that side, and we're proposing to do the very same thing on the other side. So it'll look just like that side on this side, the opposite. The entry to the unit above the cafe will be from these steps, which are, there are steps there now. Well, the entry to these back units would be off of the steps from the back and from the front. And there's quite a nice little cobblestone path that goes in this space.
So that one door that you just showed us that led up to the apartment?
Yes.
So where's the other door to get out of that apartment?
So there's just one.
So that one means of egress?
Yep.
There's no door under the deck in the back?
No, so for residential uses like this, where if it's a single unit, windows in a bedroom, for example, have to be of a certain size so that it can be, they can get out.
But that's out of a bedroom?
Correct, yep.
But I mean, when you go through the door, you're not directly into a bedroom?
Correct, yeah.
So you're saying that the second means of egress would be a bedroom window?
Well, so I don't think a second means of egress is required if your only door directly to the outside. Just like your house.
Yeah, my house is required to have two means of egress.
But there's a deck between the front unit and the back unit, so you'd be able to get out a window from any of the rooms, I think, onto the deck.
On the second floor, not on the...
Well, the unit is on the second floor. What do those windows look like on the second floor? Are they windows?
Yeah, they're on. I'm going to think about that. I'm not sure from the perspective of view. I know if, for example, this were an apartment building with multifamily housing in it, each apartment has one means of egress to the corridor, and then that corridor has two means of egress. But because you're going directly to the exterior, I'm not sure that a second means of egress in this case would be required. I will check on that.
Yeah, I mean, prior to moving forward with this, you have agency or you yourself providing a code analysis?
Yes, yep.
Who's doing it, is it you or somebody else?
So I do it at first, and then we have a consultant as well.
Is your consultant?
A guy by the name of Chris Howell.
It's not a company like Code Red?
Code Red.
I would also think that the building inspector, if there's a second egress required, would mandate it as part of the building permit.
I'm just concerned that that might change the design. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I will definitely look into that, yep.
And the other units as well, they only have one means of egress?
Correct. All directly to the egress unit.
And it's going to be by expression?
Yes. So for example, if this were a townhouse, right, which had, you know, a unit next to the unit, those all have one means of egress out of the front of the unit.
Out from a town, though?
Yep.
But then they also have one at the back?
Typically, no. Not all.
Maybe some that's...
I don't think the one that we approved at 35 School had two egresses, that two-family. That two-family.
Yeah, even, so even a multifamily building that has no more than four units on a floor, has not had one means of egress. There is the window thing that also is in play, that the windows have to be of a certain size.
But are you talking about an existing building or a new building?
In the case, for example, of one school that was existing, but I think new is...
So, I mean, if you go into the I E B C and you have, you know, four units, you have a, I forget the exact amount of how the egress travel.
Yep.
And you are allowed to have one.
Correct.
And you have by suppression, and those bedroom windows don't necessarily have to meet egress size. But that's an existing building. I mean, this is an existing building, but you're changing the use, which is going to require, it's going to trigger full compliance.
Yep.
So my concern is that if it's required to have two means of egress, but it doesn't, how's that going to affect your design?
Yeah. So let me get back to you to confirm that it is required to have two means of egress.
If it were to need a separate point of egress, is that something that you've thought about? Or it could be easily attainable or...
Both of these, the front two units, sorry, the back two units could have egress out of the second floor onto this roof area. And this unit could have egress of a different point onto this roof.
Same, to the same shared area, okay.
But that would be a door, not a window?
That could be a door. Yeah.
So it would be a door out of the bedrooms?
I'm not sure where it would go out of on that side.
Well, it can't go through a bedroom.
Right.
It's not allowed.
Oh, so I see what you mean by design. If they need to have a door, they may need to make a bedroom smaller or accommodate. Okay.
And you can't go through a bedroom because if somebody's in the bedroom, they lock the door.
Ah, okay. Okay.
Yeah, we'll check that and make sure. If it is required, we will do it.
But it also sounds like if that were to happen, it wouldn't change the footprint, the lot size, the addition size, the height, or...
Because our, really, I mean, we're dealing with a change of use, which is correct. We have to be concerned that it's now residential. And then we're dealing with the addition because it's adding mass and that side of the building is already in the setback. So that they could change the interior layout and it wouldn't really impact our jurisdiction.
Yeah, in fact, I think that issue is more of a building code than a building official issue. I think it would be solvable without changing any of the other aspects that would be in your jurisdiction.
No, I mean, I understand it's a building code issue. I just wonder if that building code issue is going to affect your design?
Yeah.
Right.
I am the building.
That's why you're going to be building official questions because you have a building inspector here.
Georgia and I don't have a clue.
It's like fire alarms, okay, fire suppression.
That's why you hired me.
Do you have any questions, George and Josh?
I did just want to, so the non-conformity is on, I kind of just roughed that. So the lot size, it's under by 76 square feet.
Right.
And the side setback is under by four feet. And that's really...
And the front setback, there's none? That's all by five?
Yeah, good point, yes. So by negative five. Okay. So in my mind, those are minor compared to what we've seen before. So no question.
It's a congested area.
Yeah.
With old buildings.
Yes.
Diane, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thanks.
Is there any member of the public in the room that has any questions? Yes, sir.
I have a comment.
State your name and address, please.
Sure, Dave Demeter. I own 49 and 54 Union Street.
Okay.
The same district, almost within eye shot, eyesight of Seven Central. And I think that the work that Mr. Flamri and his team have done in this town, especially with these old buildings, which are very difficult and very expensive to modernize and make useful, has been outstanding. And I think, I've been a lifelong resident of Manchester. This building in particular needs substantial, substantial work. And I'm in full support as somebody in the district for this type of use. And I think also adding residential units is also something that this town needs and can benefit from while also maintaining the commercial space. So that's my, that's my comment.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public on Zoom? Oh, I see Gar Morris has his hand raised. Mr. Morris?
Yes, I think Demeter said it pretty well. They appear to have done a very sensitive job on taking a pretty complicated situation and doing something that is good for the town from an architectural and planning standpoint, but also from a social and economic standpoint with the addition of the residential units. And we know we have a housing situation here. So it's good to get a few more places for people to live and preserving the retail street front, I think, will be good. And so I, as I say, I think Mr. Demeter said it pretty well, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to raise their hand and speak? There's one thing I want to say. I think you've done a fantastic job of renovating a large number of apartments in town. And we really appreciate that. The only concern is because you're spending so much money, the rents have to go up. And one of the things I would ask you is if you would give it some thought, as for instance, when you're working on the one at the Warner School and Union, some of those are smaller, if you might consider at some point making one or two of those affordable. And you can talk to the Affordable Housing Trust. And they might be able to help in that effort. But that would be appreciated in a affordable housing. I happen to be on that meeting. Anything else? Or should I close the public hearing?
Make a motion, please. Well, I see you have to make that motion. I'm sorry, but I feel like the audience and yourself has said everything I would say.
Okay, I move to close the public hearing and have the board enter into deliberations with respect to the application. Have a second?
Second.
Vote. Rob?
Yes.
Georgia? Diane?
Yes.
There are votes, yes. Okay. Now, we have to make the determination that this is not substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood. That your sense is not substantially more detrimental?
I don't think it is.
And either the change of use or the... I mean, I think certainly mixed use is a benefit.
Absolutely, and having more residential is a benefit.
Yep.
Like you had said, I do agree that if there's any consideration for making some affordable, not this unit, but other units you create or providing in lieu of payment, that would always be a bonus. I think the designs you do are great and the presentation was great. And I think half this town won't even know a change. You know, antique table may be different, it's a different place, but they may, it's going to look the same, and I appreciate that.
Diane, what's your feeling?
I agree completely. Georgia has expressed it well. And I agree with Sarah that if in the future affordable housing could be part of the plans, that would be super.
I just have one request. My O C E cannot take that dip in the roof, so can you guys fix that?
Yeah, actually...
Could you make it straight?
We'll try. The entire building, you saw it over the weekend.
Yeah, yes.
It's like being on a ship at sea, right? It's, there's ups and downs all over the place. In fact, some of the framing looks to have been done while it has been, in other words, it hasn't been corrected in a long time. And also, if you notice, as you walk by, some of the existing posts, original, existing posts are there. And they're not in great shape. It's our hope to replace in kind wherever possible. And when we do that, we will be able to hopefully right things a little bit. But even that depth is inside in the ceiling structure above the first floor. So it looks like whatever settled, probably the fireplace a long, long time ago, whatever settled there did a long time ago. So we will try and get it back up as best we can.
If it gets a steal.
I would do it.
Am I correct, there was no plan to raise it? Because if it were raised, that would change our decision. I mean, that would impact our decision.
We did discuss whether it was in the best interest of the building, to be honest, to have it knocked down and rebuilt in the form that it was, right? In some ways, that's probably the less expensive thing to do. It might even be the best thing to do for the life of the building. However, once we do that, I believe we would fall into some other criteria, some other jurisdiction, including Conservation Commission, including Chapter 91 Rivers Act. So that, we believe, would delay this project considerably and may not actually end up being worthwhile. But as my client has proven over the years, he's been able to do pretty remarkable things with these old buildings by essentially rebuilding them from the inside. It's not easy, but he's done a good job of it.
So do you want us to include a condition in case it is raised?
So you guys are at 32 feet in height now, and the zoning requirement is 35. That leaves you three feet of...
Yeah, but what I'm thinking of is if, as they go, they decide they have to raise it, do we want to include a condition that would say if the building is raised, it will be rebuilt on the same footprint, in the same architectural style?
Yeah, no higher than the zoning allows.
Well, they couldn't anyway.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense, Mr. Flamri?
In fact, we might, I think by right, in theory, we could knock it down and rebuild it exactly as it is. We could do that. The thing that I'm nervous about getting triggered are the other zone, or the other jurisdictions.
I mean, we have one on Proctor Street that came before us last year to rebuild, and now they're coming before us again because they're raising.
Because of the height. No, I agree with that. I think that's...
Okay.
But that's a different subject. I mean, Proctor is a historical, right?
No, right. Oh, yeah.
Our passion is to keep everything that could possibly save.
Right.
Believe in it, it's not easy to do. You made the slant in the roof, I agree, but that was originally built in there back in 1750s, exactly that. I think we did it for the stone to fall off, but I'm the same as you. But that's a reason, if you look at it, I have all the oldest storage you can ever imagine. But I will try to put it back exactly the way it is. We do my best, but sometimes we can't. It's just a joke. You don't really have to make it straight.
I owned a house out on School Street, which dated back to 1684. And all the, I did all the original stuff.
There are some things that will require us to do certain things to the building. For example, because of the commercial on the first floor, residential above, there's a rated assembly required for that floor structure. So, and the floor that I mentioned, that's the loft in the ambrel roof, it is roughly timbers that are about that size, probably about two feet apart. So structurally, all of that will be addressed.
Okay. You ready for me to make a motion? I move to approve the application of A G E M Seven Central LLC for special permits under Section 7.2 and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw. And to other relief, as may be necessary, to add 192 square foot addition on the second floor on the rear section of the existing non-conforming building on the west side of the structure, which currently encroaches into the side setback. And a change of use in a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot from a restaurant to a mixed use containing a restaurant slash cafe and three residential units, both of which units are conforming, at Seven Central Assessor's Map Number 53, Lot Number 32 in District G, filed with the town clerk on January 16th, 2025, based on a finding, the proposed project to add 192 square foot second floor addition and residential units. And a change of use from a restaurant to a mixed use containing a restaurant, cafe and three residential units, both units being conforming, in a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located than the existing non-conforming structure. And the conditions under which, and the conditions under Section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following conditions. The addition is located within the footprint of the existing structure as depicted on the Architectural Site Plan prepared by Olson Lewis Plus dated November 25th, 2024. The addition renovations in units are constructed substantially in accordance with the plans prepared by Olson Lewis Plus dated January 23rd, 25. Is that the correct date? Okay. S D 1.01 rear unit layouts. S D 1.2, 1.02 cafe and front unit layout. S D 2.0, south and north, 2.00, south and north elevations. S D 2.01, east and west elevation. And if the building is raised, it will be rebuilt on the same footprint with the same historic character. I have a second.
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? Take a vote. Diane?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Georgia?
Yes.
There are votes, yes. Want me to write it?
I'll review it.
Okay. So you're all set?
Thank you all. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, and I was going to tell you that the current maximum, the 2024 maximum allowable rent in Greater Boston for 80% of A M I, which is affordable, a one-bedroom is $2,042.
I was going to say 40.
What was your answer, Rob?
$2,042. It's not super low.
No.
No.
Yeah.
No.
It's not.
Because the area median income's so high.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Administrative matters. We do not have any, thank you very much. We do not have any minutes to review. Am I, does everyone agree that we reviewed the November minutes at the last meeting? Okay, those haven't been posted, so I need to get them posted. And the status of the decisions is, I believe, they're all done except for Seven Highwood, which I'm working on.
Yep, I submitted that, so, yeah.
Good, okay. Good, okay. We're having some administrative issues.
Yeah, was there a switch over?
Yeah, and I'm not seeing stuff like I used to. Our next meeting is March 26th. We have 26 Proctor, which is one that we had approved back in 2024. It's the EPS.
I was going to say, is that Kalen and?
Yeah, it's the EPS. And they're now raising the house.
Okay, I will have to recuse myself, but.
Okay, and rebuilding it. It's a little larger than what we approved, so they're asking for a variance for coverage and stuff, so.
Okay, that seems straightforward.
Yeah. So we'll switch to site visits in the evening. Does Monday or Tuesday at like 5:00 or 5:30 work best for people?
I think it's a little bit.
Okay.
No, wait.
I don't, I'm not going to vote on this, so I can say, but if it's in future site visits in general, being at night, that's absolutely fine.
Okay.
I know you say that works great.
Okay, good. That's, does anybody have anything else? Nope, that's all I have. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Nope.
Yes.
Who's on top of it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Diane. Okay, thanks a lot. Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
Hope we didn't mess up your dinner.